Say it again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm having to use my speaker on my computer box because my headset's not working, so it's going to make it a little bit harder to hear, which is exactly what I need. Hey, Tom, would you like our cameras to be on the whole time?
Um.
I haven't been here in a minute, so I'm just making sure.
Yeah, technically, I suppose the people want to see what faces you're making and stuff like that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The staff will be off, but it's probably best to have all the council on. And of course, they can keep your mic off when you're not speaking.
Right.
I'm good. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, we will call the regular scheduled meeting for October the 13th, 2020, the Elgin City Council to order at 6:00 PM. And that'll bring it to call to order. We'll start with we'll start with Forrest and go in order.
Forrest here. Dennis here.
Grazer here.
Lopez here.
Cannon here.
Pinson here.
Begga here.
Do we have Councilmember Ariaga? And how about Councilmember Gonzalez? Okay, let the let the record reflect that we have a quorum and show that Councilmembers Ariaga and Councilmember Gonzalez are are absent. Do I hear a motion to excuse them?
I'll second.
Who is the motion? Jessica?
Or Brazer.
Okay, I got a motion by Begga and a second by Pinson. Is that right?
Yes.
Motion by Brazer.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Jessica?
Begga, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazer, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Pinson, yes.
Okay, let the records reflect that Councilmember Ariaga and Councilmember Gonzalez are excused. However, Councilmember Ariaga joined the meeting at 6:02, so she is not absent. All right, and that will lead us into the invocation. Councilmember Lopez, would you like to lead us in the invocation, please?
Yeah. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us here together. Even though it's virtual, Lord, we ask that you help us make the right decisions, not just for ourselves, but for the city. Give us knowledge, wisdom that we need, and let this be a very productive meeting. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. No scheduled public hearing, correct, Tom?
That's correct. I heard that was a
And then bring us to public comment. Has anybody signed up for public comment?
They have not earlier today. Amelia, you didn't get any, hear from anybody later, did you?
No, sir.
Okay. And that will bring us to item number seven, the presentation. We have one proclamation today for this month for Central Texas Against Cancer Together. This is actually a really cool program through that was brought to Bastrop County through Bastrop County Cares, and we are actually going to be giving free mammograms across the county for the next next time, for the next few months, I believe. But I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation because the group wanted to have all the mayors read their proclamation and have a video of that together, so you'll bear with me. Proclamation by the City of Elgin, Texas, whereas Bastrop County Cares has been involved in a two-year partnership with Central Texas Against Cancer Together. And whereas this is a five-county coalition involved with increasing screening for cancer in rural communities among uninsured women. And whereas breast cancer was chosen as the first cancer to fight together. And whereas UT Dale Medical Children's Medical School and Off-Cent area Research Organization, NAREO, have partnered with Bastrop County Cares to help design a pilot for increasing breast cancer screening in Bastrop County. Whereas our immediate goal is to do 50 free screenings before the end of the year and beyond. And whereas Bastrop County women are screened at a rate of 40%, while the national average is 75%, our pilot is aimed at increasing screening by 15% a year over the next two years. Whereas Bastrop County Cares was able to get grants from Divers Cancer Foundation and local fundraising that will allow uninsured and underinsured women to be assisted in getting free screening mammography. And now therefore be it resolved that October 23rd through 31st be known as Pinky Promise Week and encourage citizens to participate in the outreach efforts of the Pinky Promise, not only during Pinky Promise Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to stopping our breast cancer. In witness thereof, I have set in my hand and cause to seal the City of Elgin, Texas to be affixed this 13th day of October 2020. All right, thank you very much. And that'll bring us to the city manager's report. Tom?
Thanks, Mayor. I was texting a minute there with Councilmember Gonzalez. He's trying to join us. He's just having a little problem, so Michael's going to try to help him. Hopefully he'll get on here in a minute. I just wanted to mention that I actually asked again for a little more feedback from council relative to our the city's current COVID response and and operational changes. As you may or may not be aware, the City of Bastrop and some other entities have actually, local government entities have begun to open up their, for business and reopen their facilities and had a long conversation with with the mayor from Bastrop last week, and the City of Bastrop has actually gone back to pretty much completely opened operations. They have different, still requiring face coverings, social distancing protocols. But pretty much all their buildings and they're starting to open almost all their parks, facilities the same way. So we, the staff got together last week and I wanted to burst the question with them about what more we could do and when we'd be ready to open in a similar way. And frankly, after a lengthy conversation, the staff's consensus basically was that we think we're, by all accounts, being able to conduct business well, that we're not getting complaints from residents. We obviously, the primary focus seems to be on trying to get the library as open as possible, and we've made strides to do that. Computer workstations are now open there. We're still limiting overall occupancy of those buildings. Same with the rec center and our parks facilities. We think we're able to, with certain disclaimers and documented understanding about our limitations, we think we can begin to open those facilities more, open the restrooms at Memorial Parks and things like that. But as far as City Hall and our other buildings go, kind of consensus from department heads was that maybe we should wait a little longer, that mainly based on the fact that we're not getting pressure from the public and we're seemingly being able to conduct all business here, that that is normal. So and then there was discussion there that as the schools were still in a period, as the schools began to open, and certainly in some circles, there's a prediction of a different wave and impact. And of course, you know, one of our number one goals would be to not open, reopen, but then have to close again in another couple of weeks or a month. So generally, the consensus from the staff was that, I shouldn't say generally, the unified consensus of the staff was maybe we should continue to monitor, but wait a little bit before we completely go back to reopening all our facilities. So I guess I just wanted to get council's feedback on that and say that we haven't made a decision that way and frankly have waited to update my specific report until we could have this conversation with council. But but I just wanted to try to get any general feedback y'all might have about that. And and understanding that it's a big part of our decision that way would be predicated on the fact that that we're assuming that all our service needs are being met and that you're not hearing any complaints from people about wanting to get into the buildings that they can't get into or asking you about when we're going to completely reopen again. So so I guess I just wanted to generally share that and see what feedback or either tonight or later in the week, any viewpoints you might have about about this reopening question. We're we're obviously trying to be safe, but we want to get back to normal business too. So if anybody, any thoughts you want to share with me, I'd appreciate it, either now or later.
Anybody having feedback on the Corona response? Okay, real quick, I want to let the record reflect that Councilmember Gonzalez entered a meeting at 6:05 PM. And he is present.
Okay, we'll just, like I said, I think we're inclined to continue to operate as is and make what small changes we can, but we're always as it's been from the beginning, this isn't an exact science and we're trying to be try to make consensus decisions about these things. So if anybody has any input, please let me know. I'll just keep going, Mayor. That's all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, next would be our department reports. I don't really have anything to add to that unless anybody has any question about them. And then a couple of things I just want to run over relative to our meeting schedule. Again, we're, we've moved tonight's meeting to a virtual meeting, both from the perspective of being in conflict with the early voting, but also when we set the schedule in January, we thought we'd be having national light out last week. At this point, I would say that we've tried to, with the staff and what have you, we believe the agenda tonight reflects all council items that will need to be, that are timely and need to be addressed before a November meeting. So as of tonight, I would say we're not planning on having the second meeting in October, which would have been on the 27th. Mainly because that would still conflict with early voting. We'd have to do, if we do have the meeting on the 27th, we'd have to do it virtually. Just remember that the normal, the regular schedule would have had our meeting on the 3rd, but we moved that again in January to November 10th. So the next, if we don't have our second meeting this month, then the next council meeting will be on November 10th. And a possible second meeting on November 24th, but then by December, on December 1st, that would put us back on our regular schedule. Just just information, let's see if anybody had any questions about any of that. All right, just wanted to mention a couple of things we continue to work on. We've had some real success here recently with an increased and kind of refocused effort on code enforcement and both code enforcement and combination of mobilizing city resources, not to work independently, but to work together. And addressing some issues that we all, I think, normally refer to code enforcement issues. We've actually utilized Public Works, our code enforcement staff and the police department where necessary. And we're taking more of a a bigger approach to looking at these issues. And the staff did that on Alamo Street recently, in the last few weeks, and made a focus on the entire corridor, kind of from beginning to end, from Main Street back and using those resources, then of course, working with the private property owners to bring their properties in compliance. I think we're really successful in in ending up with a product where there was a noticeable impact on that whole corridor, and it wasn't just instead of looking at one property at a time, we're trying to look at the whole street corridors and focus those efforts now. Our next area we've moved to is Brenham Street, and we'll be heading down Brenham, I think, later this week, because we're going to get started there. So we're going to continue to pick out these these kind of areas where we want to work on the whole street, the whole corridor, a number of blocks at one time. And not only combine all the city resources, but work together with the property owners in these areas that need focus. So if you have any suggested areas that way, of course, we'll continue to respond to individual properties and issues. But but we're trying to take a bigger, bigger picture approach to to this effort. And certainly in the beginning, it's, I think it's showing that we're accomplishing a little more. Unfortunately, the one thing I can tell you is that we, Ed Holland, our code enforcement, our chief code enforcement officer, that that has helped us move up our game a little bit here, has actually submitted his resignation. He got he got hired by the City of Austin as a code enforcement officer and for more money than we could match, as you might imagine. So so Ed's done some good work for us, but but he'll be leaving us in a couple of weeks. So unfortunately, we're going to be down a little bit on staffing there, right at the time where we were making some momentum. But hopefully, we're coming close to the end of the mowing season, so maybe we'll have a little time. I wanted to mention again, there's no, I don't have any real update. Amy, are you on there? Is there any update about Halloween events? Thought this might be our last chance to talk about Halloween before before November.
Well, hello, everybody. So we have a number of kind of alternative Halloween celebrations throughout the month that the city's helping provide through the Community Services Division. So the Recreation Department is offering a reservations-only event where you can sign up to carve a jack-o'-lantern with your household. And it's the pumpkin and all the supplies and a reserved table at the rec center. And then they're also doing an event for Halloween bag decorating. The library is doing a program for Dia de los Muertos, teaching folks about sugar skulls and how to make those. And that'll be a virtual event. And then on a supply, limited supplies available basis, folks will be able to come get a collection of sugar skulls that they can then paint at home with their family. The library is doing several virtual programs related to Halloween-themed stories. They were doing a special event on the 27th virtually to give folks lots of ideas about things to do for Halloween instead of traditional mass trick-or-treating activity. And then they are also doing special Halloween-themed activity bags the week of Halloween that folks can can come pick up. And on Saturday, the 31st, they'll, they'll be in costume for folks who are coming to use the library that day. And then in the downtown district, the Main Street program is helping host a costume contest. It'll be a virtual contest where you take your picture downtown, send it in, and then we'll organize the photos and then make those available on social media so that folks can vote and choose their, by their likes. We'll have a number of winners for Halloween costumes. And then they're also doing a scavenger hunt in the downtown district that's Halloween-themed. And a number of businesses have done some really fabulous, all decorating window displays, and they've been inviting the community to come do your fall pictures in downtown, take advantage of that. And of course, both Christmas tree farms are offering their pumpkin hunts. Those have traditionally been every Saturday during the month of October for years now, but there's definitely some additional interest this year with the current situation.
Thanks, Amy. Well, doesn't sound like we slowed down a bit. And we're, and Hawkeye's still canceled, is that right?
It is, but you can get your souvenir face covering right now at Dorothy's and Red Boutique and The Owl. Several businesses downtown are selling the Hawkeye Festival face coverings. And the official 2020 souvenir shirt will be available later this week. And it is a full-color fun shirt, so keep your eye out for that.
Y'all see Amy, make sure you give her some encouragement, because is it next week when it should be?
It should be, yeah.
She doesn't already know about how she's going to be next week with no Hawkeye. All right, thanks. And then finally, just wanted to mention that we are finally going to see the groundbreaking for our new quartz transit center in downtown Elgin. I know this is actually a project that the conversation predates my time with the city, so it's sure been a long time coming. But but of course, the good news about those kind of deliberations is once they make the commitment, then you know it's really going to happen. So so we're actually having a groundbreaking this week on Thursday at 4 o'clock, so I hope you all can join us and get another sticker on your shovel. And this project will be and as we've discussed, we always ask that these groundbreakings occur immediately before construction. So we expect construction to get, to be actually seeing construction activity down there real soon. So I hope everybody can join us on Thursday. That's all I had on my report, Mayor, unless anybody had any questions for me.
Any questions for any part of the report, council? Okay. Then we will move on to new business then. Item number one, under new business and ordinance of the City of Elgin, Texas, amending the amount of appropriations that provide for the payment of general fund operating expenditures and by changing the amount appropriated for the Executive Administration Department and the Police Department as originally adopted by ordinance number adopted September 8th, 2020, in accordance with the Local Government Code of the State of Texas and the ordinances and rules of the City of Elgin, Texas appropriating the amounts thereof and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, adding effective date. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rather, kind of, well, is an unusual situation that has forced us into a very unique response. And so we got a little more detailed presentation than I normally would have for a budget amendment, but but I think it's appropriate, given the circumstances. I assume that the council had a chance, got the report I sent out late yesterday afternoon and had a chance to read that. It provides, it's kind of a reference document, provides all the information that we're going to go through tonight, but provides you a little more detailed opportunity to study the issues. As the council's well aware, the city staff has been faced with a significant challenge of addressing an inordinate amount of open records requests over the last few months. We've been subject to a huge number that's, you know, frankly, in my experience, unforeseen. And that goes with our whole staff, the City Attorney's Office, probably combined have certainly well over 100 years, maybe 150 years combined experience in local government. And none of us have ever experienced anything like this. We are regularly getting 20 to 30 open records requests a week. Whereas in my experience, if you get 20 formal requests in a year, that would be a lot. But but we're getting them rapid fire. And there's a lot of elements that are identical in each one of these. Many of the requests are huge, are potentially involved hundreds, if not thousands, of documents that have to be researched, whether or not we turn over all those documents that requires that kind of research. I think the council has seen has actually seen some of the requests and how they're worded. So these issues, I assume council's aware of. A number of the requests obviously seem to be coming from the same group of people, a small group of people. Many of the requests come in under different names, but a lot of them are generated by the same email address. Oftentimes, we're getting requests for the same exact information, of course, from different people. If one person, an individual can't repeatedly ask for the same exact information, but you know, you can get different people to make the same request, and we have to honor those. We're even seeing cases where people that are asking for the documents have already posted the documents they're asking for on social media. And in one case, an individual, where there was confusion, they eventually took a picture of the document they were holding in their hands, saying, this is the document I want you to send me. So it's not about gathering information. It's clearly about, I don't really know what some of it's about, but these are cases where clearly there, these individuals are requesting documents that they already have. Now, what's really frustrating about this is that it's a significant cost, significant impact on the taxpayers and the citizen of Elgin that there's little that we can do about. It's known, I think most of us that deal with open records or even have a cursory understanding of it, know that it's suggested that some of the costs can be recovered, but really, our experience is it's really only, under the law, there's only a minor amount of those costs that can be expended. And just for example, to this, well, I'm sure this number's greater than this, through the last billing, Elgin taxpayers have already paid over $18,000 in legal fees associated with these requests. Now, it's $18,000 out of our pocket. That's not that's a direct cost. Those are checks that we've issued for legal fees, only getting legal counsel relative to these requests that are being made. And we've spent easily four or five times that amount in lost staff time that have also impacted the citizen of Elgin in the way of services. Now, none of these costs that I'm talking about here are recoverable from the requesters. We essentially simply reached a point where we kind of have to choose. The staff cannot, within existing staffing and resources, keep up with these requests and comply with the law. And at the same time, provide the services that we're here to provide, to do the job that we're supposed to do on a daily basis. So that's why we're recommending, my recommendation is the council authorize two new full-time positions, public information officer positions, one for the administration, which would be for general government, and one supporting the police department. And I think, as the council's aware, we've discussed the future need for a public information officer position that we even discussed it in this year's budget process, that in the future, that it would be warranted when we could better afford it, when resources were more available. I consider it before these positions somewhat of a nonessential position that that we could certainly, there's an interest that all the councils expressed, to be more active on social media, where you have a great story to tell. But when you can't devote people full-time to tell that story, it gets lost sometimes. So the need to have these positions has already been discussed and the possibility of that. But frankly, I thought it would be next year's budget, maybe two years from now, that we'd be recommending these positions. But unfortunately, this circumstance that we're faced with now has forced us to take this position. And even though I haven't yet have a definitive plan exactly for how we'll pay for these positions, given the guidance we've received from the city attorney and what it'll take us to continue to comply with the law, we really don't us to continue to comply with the law, we really don't have any choice than tend to add this assistance that we need. And it's important to understand and recognize in this situation that, that this isn't just an administrative task. And in fact, I think I'd mentioned at one time to council before that we might consider hiring some temps to come in and help us. But that was before we realized, again, the way these particular requests are coming in, which council has seen, some examples of that, they're so detailed and so unique that it's not as simple as just having some administrative help to pull files. When the requests that are being made force us to have to first identify every potential document that, that may be applicable to the request. And then every one of those documents needs to be physically pulled or pulled up on the computer. And, and a staff member has to read every one of those documents simply to, to measure whether or not any of those documents include any of the, the specific information that's been requested, or whether, even though the information's been requested, is it, should it be considered confidential? And then all of those documents have to be sent to the city attorney after we've done that kind of review. And the city attorney then also has to read every one of those documents to consider whether or not the information is confidential, or if our request is right, that it be redacted. And if any of that occurs, then the city attorney has to provide written notice to that effect to the Texas attorney in general. So when you consider that all of this has to be done, and it all has to be done within a period of 10 days to comply with the law, again, we have no choice than, but then to immediately address these concerns as they come in, which leaves us with either dropping the other work that we're supposed to do on a regular basis to devote to this time, or again, as I said, add help that I'm proposing here tonight. And I think it's important to understand that, yes, the city hasn't faced this challenge before. I've never faced this challenge anywhere else and any place else I've worked. And it's because usually these requests come in in a reasonable manner. And that when, when they come in this way, as typical, when we get one or two a month, then the staff can frankly stop what they're doing. We can stop what they're doing and get it. And usually, those requests come in that are, I'd like a copy of the budget. Can you provide me a copy of the truck route ordinance? Easy documents that exist that we can pull out and copy, yes. So that kind of work, we can absorb in our normal day-to-day operations without needing additional help. It's, again, the very odd and unique nature and the huge volume of these requests that we're receiving for very finite, specific information. So while we don't have a plan, as I said, developed exactly how these positions will be paid for, and I would say that, that if, if we have another year next year, like we did with sales tax revenue, then we shouldn't have a problem simply absorbing these positions and our revenue flow will be great, at least significant, sufficient enough to cover these expenses. However, whenever we get in a situation like this, and particularly a unique situation like we are here, where I'm literally asking you to amend the budget two weeks into the fiscal year, I think we do need to have some kind of plan in place. And obviously, we're in the service business, that's where we spend the most of our money. So, so other positions and salary costs is where we go to, to see if there are savings. And so, and in that regard, we're obviously wouldn't propose eliminating existing positions. So kind of the low hanging fruit, when you're in a situation like this, is to go back and look at the new positions that we included in the budget this year that, that have yet to be filled. And, and for different reasons, the two positions, or the two or three positions actually we'd be looking for to delay filling or possibly cut out of the budget this year would be the new Main Street manager position and the two patrol officer positions that we had planned to start at mid-year this year. So it's a very frustrating situation for the staff. It's, it's, it's a situation that, as we've tried our best to continue to do the job that we're supposed to do and figure out a way to, to deal with this, what I personally think is just a form of harassment of the staff. It's not true information seeking. It's simply a way to provide an annoyance to the staff. Unfortunately, it's having a direct impact on the services that we provide to Elgin citizens and clearly is making all Elgin citizens and taxpayers pay the bills for, for this project, you might call it. It's unfortunate that different service upgrades that anticipated for this year will have to be delayed now for us to absorb these positions. But given the overall circumstances, the concerns expressed to us by the city attorney to make sure that we comply with the law, as currently written, I don't think the city has any other choice than to bring some qualified professionals on to help us address these issues in a way so the rest of us frankly can, can get back to doing the jobs that, that we're, we're paid to do for the city. So, so with that, I guess that explains the recommendation. So the action tonight, again, we used to rig our typical budget amendment ordinance. But just to be clear, what we're primarily seeking tonight is, what I consider this action to be is authorization to create these positions and immediately begin recruiting for them. And then, you know, we'll make decisions, financial decisions about the budget as the year goes on. We'll continue to monitor the situation. And as I said, it's possible that we could get to the mid-year point and revenue flow could be sufficient that we'll be able to keep these positions in place and continue with our plans to hire those other two positions. But until we come up with frankly, a better plan right now, we'd add these positions and delay hiring of the Main Street manager and delay hiring any new police officer positions.
Questions, Council? Is it, is it clear, there's a lot of information, but to clear what we're doing here, essentially foregoing two, two positions to, to create these public PIOs? Does anybody have a question on this?
I do.
Yes, me.
So you, you want to employ two persons to accommodate these public information records requests and, and for an indefinite amount of time? You want to just employ them and full-time?
Yeah, yeah, they'd be full-time positions. This isn't the only thing they would do, obviously. They would be able to help us greatly enhance our overall presence, the city's overall presence on social media. I think one of the things Mary talked about in the budget, and we've talked about for a while now, is that, that we'd like to do a bigger, better job on social media, have a bigger presence. That's clearly where a lot of people get their information. We want to do a much better job all the way around. These positions would help guide that whole process, help us upgrade in a lot of ways. As I said, I think both the police department, particularly in the city, have a great story to tell. We just don't have the resources to invest in telling us that would, these positions would enable us to do that. So yes, the, the immediate need is for them to help us with these open records requests. But they would be full-time positions, they'd be permanent positions. And, and they would help us do a whole lot more other things than just these open records requests. And I would say this too, part of having the two positions is, again, authorizing the positions, in my mind, simply allows us to go ahead and begin recruiting for these positions. The truth is, if, if we got lucky and found one really good person in the short run, maybe, maybe we'd only need to hire one person to do both jobs for a while. But it's, it's more about, since we're discussing it, it's more about definitely the long-term approach for the city, I think, in this regard. And, and this is the consensus of most people, is that police departments have such a unique part of what they do and the details and the information, the language, all is so kind of unique, you're really better off having one person just to focus on, on telling that story from a police department standpoint, and then another person doing it from general information. I would just say, even open records requests, it's very typical that most cities get a lot more open records requests relative to the police department than they do any other part of the operation. So, so the motivation, the initial motivation is to help us with this immediate problem, but they'll definitely have other roles. But, but yes, they'd be full-time positions, not temporary.
What price range are we looking at? What salary price meaning? Because you want to forego two offices and a Main Street manager or whatever?
We think the base salary is, is probably the low 40s, 40, 45,000, maybe more, maybe as much as 50,000. Then with benefits. I think if we, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Probably 60 grand per employee.
Maybe, again, it's, it's, I mean, this is the other part about where we're still at as a city, I think. We're never really sure on what kind of applicants we're going to get. So, so that's, that's what I mean, exactly what we pay, yes, if we could, we found one person that could do the job for everybody instead of two and, and paid them a little more than 40 or 50,000, it might, it obviously would make sense. So, so it's, we just haven't done all of that analysis yet to, mainly, you're up to start recruiting, kind of see what we get.
Are we receiving requests daily, or how many are we receiving a week?
Well, we, last Monday, we had 23 on one day. We're receiving them sporadically, there's no real pattern to, I guess, like a lot of things, it seems, of course, as you usually know, those don't come directly to me, I'm just going by what the staff says. But, but we get them sporadically during the week, but, but it does seem like a lot of things that we get more on Monday after the weekend than what we'll get every day.
I think one way that, that makes it a little clearer is a public information officer is somebody who deals with just that public information, social, would probably run our social media. Tom, would, this would be a really good opportunity to work on some of the constituent services that, constituent information services that council members receive based on, you know, for operations, like we all, we all get those same phone calls, emails about, you know, this yard being, or this, you know, right away being mowed or trash out or whatever, be somebody that could handle those type of situations as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it, it's a case where what we could do, and again, that's part of having a real professional, an experienced professional, we get one of, there's no telling what ideas they can come up with. But, but I think we've talked about more than once as a council that, that are, are, in spite of, I think we make a lot of really good efforts, but our outreach isn't always successful. So again, having somebody that would just be purely focused on that, press releases, just you said, more information about programs, a more comprehensive approach to information getting out. And, and, and you know, those are situations that feed on themselves when you get on social media and, and when people know to, they can depend on a source from the city, there's no telling what subscription services we could do and, and different things we could do that way. But yeah, it would also open the door for, for more individualized type feedback to questions. We don't, we try to do a pretty good job of responding to questions we get, but certainly aren't able to do that in a way we could if we had people devoted to this task.
So essentially, a PR, social media person, but, but would also do the open records requests and cut down on, on the money that we spend for attorneys, potentially?
Hopefully, yes. I mean, again, it's, it's, again, there's a whole lot of this information that, that, that's why we're running up the bills, that there are obviously legal implications with some of it, so we have to be extra careful. Whereas, whereas if we can turn this task over to somebody that, whose expertise is a little higher that way, they, they, yeah, that in the long run would hopefully help us reduce those costs as well.
Does that help broaden, broaden it for anybody? Is there a question?
I just want to make sure we're emphasizing here that this is not a recommendation we're making. As I said, I think these are, public information officers are good in positions, they're important for the city to have. But typically, you'd see a city, like a growing city like us, take a couple more steps, have a couple more years worth developing resources. That's the very issue we've talked about with council, that we, we can only carry this issue so far without adversely affecting what money we have to spend on other more pressing needs. But this is literally an issue where we cannot comply with the law and still provide the services that we do to citizens now and deal with these volume of requests. So we literally have no choice. I want this to be suggested, I'm recommending we hire new people out of fiscal year, just because I think it's a good idea. There are some other benefits that can come from it, but this recommendation is exclusively about the only way we know to address this issue of this crazy demand that's been put on us for open records requests.
Questions?
I don't think we have a choice because we have to abide by the law.
And, and Tom, is there a certain amount of time we have to comply with them? Is there like a 10, 10-day period as to when we have to get the records to them or something like that?
Yes, and that's, that, again, that's an important part of this. It's important to understand, it's because of the, the detailed level of requests, the analysis it requires, is that's where that time's compromised. The law says 10, 10 days. So that means if you call us and ask us to send you a copy of the budget, we have 10 days to get you that budget. Well, if you're just asking for an existing report or a document that requires no research, yeah, 10 days is easy. We usually get those in, to the person the same day, but 10 days is no problem. But when you think through these steps I went through before, where you talk about hundreds, if not thousands of documents that have to be individually read by the staff, then sent to Round Rock and individually read by our city attorney, and then the city attorney has to decide whether or not there needs to be requests made of the attorney general. And all that has to be done within 10 days. Yeah, it's very challenging. And, and again, that's why we, we can't do our same job. I, I think one thing to keep in mind about this that makes it so unique is the fact that all we do from a local government standpoint is focus on long-term, comprehensive planning where we serve the interests of citizens at large and the community at large. And virtually everything we do is predicated on a long-term plan, a number of steps, that's the most effective way to, to address all city concerns, all operations. So our staff is kind of oriented of, you literally don't operate under crisis management, which means crisis management means let's drop everything you're doing and address this right now. So all this, everything else we work is devoted in not having to do that. Yet in this circumstance that we're in now, it seems counterintuitive, but that's exactly what we have to do. We get these requests, numerous members of our staff and the police department, HR, the city secretary, the city attorney, literally have to drop whatever they're doing at the time, immediately address this issue in order to make this 10-day time. And again, that's, that's- address this issue in order to make this 10-day time. And again, that's that's the focus of the city attorney is to make sure when we talk about complying with the law, the biggest part of it is hitting that 10-day time limit.
So we're not making the 10-day 10-days limit? That's why we're needing help?
No, man, we absolutely are hitting those. We're complying with the law in every respect. But what's happening is all our other work is suffering. We're not, I personally spent at least 50% of my time last week working on just this issue, just working with the staff, trying to control these issues. The human resources department has not been able to do any other work. Payroll was almost delayed this week because she had to devote her time specifically to this effort. So what I'm saying to you is that one, it's got to give one way or the other. Either all the citizens in town have to be willing to take less services from us than what they're used to, or we have to get more help. But yeah, I want that to be clear. We're we're in compliance, substantial compliance with every party, open records for law and and continue to be.
Any other questions or comments, opinions? Okay, well, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented under item one.
So moved by Lopez.
Got a motion by Lopez. Here, second. Brazier. Okay, I've got a motion by council member Lopez and a second by council member Brazier. I will call for a vote, starting with Lopez.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you, council.
May I if I could just wrap up? Appreciate the support from council. I hope you know we're we'll certainly be doing everything we can to to do this as economically as we can. But but we have to do what we have to do. So I appreciate your support in us that way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number two, an ordinance to establish a comprehensive schedule of fees and charges necessary to generate the funding for general and specific operations required to satisfy service needs of the city. To amend ordinance 2019-9-24-15 and subsequent amendments to that ordinance, establish categories of fees and charges, revise existing revise existing rates, reconfirm existing rates, provide for savings clause, repeal conflicting ordinances or resolutions, and provide that this ordinance shall become effective as stated herein. Tom?
Thank you, mayor. You might remember that last our last meeting, we councilman Gonzalez had a couple of questions about the fee structure and and we didn't have a clear answer for it at the time, but we do now. So I was gonna have Amy's done a little research based on the questions received. So she's gonna jump in here and brief you on those items.
Hello, mayor and council. So at the beginning of the year, the historic review board looked at the fee schedule. They compared the fees recommended initially for the historic districts to the fees that are in place in surrounding communities. We specifically looked at Maynor, Bastrop, Georgetown, Taylor, and Hutto to see if other communities that had historic districts were offering different fees for the downtown area. All of those communities did have a different fee structure for the historic business district, and it was a significantly lower fee structure. One of the primary examples to kind of help illustrate the differences in cost downtown that that we looked at relates to signage as an example. So the type of signs that you install in our historic district are significantly less expensive than the signs that one installs in a commercial shopping center, for example, on Highway 95 North or on Highway 290. A typical sign downtown runs from about 300 to 600. As pretty standard, a storefront window sign is typically less than 200. But the fees that are charged for signage in general, again, based on signage out on Highway 290, the fees would have been as much as the sign itself. So that was one of the examples that we looked at, and we did use a comparison to those five other communities. The typically the fees that the fees that they recommended at their board meeting on April 28th are the ones that you see in this structure. And they did look at the at the fee structure January, February, March, and then in April finalized this recommendation.
So the long and short of it, Amy, is that that, yes, on its surface, some of these fees do appear to be less in the downtown area than they are in other commercial areas. But we are making a conscious decision that's typical of any Texas town that has a historic downtown. At least we see that, yeah, you do try to give a little breaks where you can to encourage more development in downtown. But it's it's not about individuals or or the type of business, it's just the area.
Okay. Questions, council?
I got something, mayor.
Go ahead.
Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
I'm opposed to having different rate schedules for the same services for residents of Elgin. I don't feel that's right at all. As it is, in my opinion, the historic district already enjoys more benefits like grants, mega grants, super grants, and an inordinate amount of city services than the rest of the city. I took a cursory look at the property owners in the historic district. A lot of them live out of town, or the properties are owned by corporations. Why are we giving them breaks and penalizing our citizens who have lived here forever? For example, if mom and pop, who are lifelong Elgin residents, want to open a business on South Main or 290 or wherever, they've got to pay more for these fees. I'm opposed to the separate fee schedule.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about the council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to pass the ordinance as presented.
So moved, Dennis.
Motion by Dennis. Any second?
Second by Lopez.
Okay, I got a motion by council member Dennis and a second by council member Lopez. We'll start the voting with council member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
I thought I guess I get my call. Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, no.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
All right, that passes with a majority of vote of seven to one, with council member Gonzalez voting no. All right. On to item number three, a resolution to renew the written investment policy and and investment strategy regarding the investment of city funds for city funds October 13, 2020.
Mayor, actually, these next few items on the agenda are all ones that Charles, either finance issues or ones he's kind of taking the lead on. So I'm just gonna let him speak to each one of these.
Okay, Charles? Can't hear you, Charles. I'm not hearing you.
Says your back's on, but can't hear you. All right, well, I can jump in, Chris. I think I can take the lead on these next few. They're pretty routine. So Charles can figure his out. This first item is our investment, written investment policy. A copy of that has been included in the packet. You had a chance to, if you had a chance to review it. This is a routine annual item we do every year with the budget to to actually required by state law to stipulate what our investment policy and strategy is. No changes in what it's been for years, or at least the time we've been here, I'll say that. But it's just a routine matter that we have to, council needs to approve it every year.
And this is basically probably a bunch of stuff we don't understand anyway about all the investment, reinvestment stuff that we don't have.
It's basically this.
Over anyway.
That's right.
There you go.
Yes.
I think we got it solved for you, Charles, but go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a requirement of the Public Funds Investment Act. That's something we do every year. There's a couple of limitations that we have in terms of of fully actualizing the written investment policy. One, we don't have that much unrestricted funds that we can invest. And secondly, it it can take a lot of time if you do it properly, and we simply don't have the staff to be able to do too much investing. So in our investment policy, and this is the way it's been for the last couple of years, is that it's very restrictive in terms of the things that we can do with the the funds that we do have. But mainly, we're looking at liquidity and safety of the investments we make. And so that will continue to be until such time as we begin to develop enough unrestricted funds that we can do a little bit better investing and we have more staff time to be able to do that. But in the meantime, this is something that's required by state law that you renew it every year. Take a look at it, make sure that one of the things is that your investment officer, which is me, maintains their certification that we have to go through every the continuing education every two years. Mine is up this next year in March, so I'll have to renew that. But we're compliant with that. And this is simply documentation that the council has taken a look at it and that we're going to continue the same policies that we've had in the past.
Okay. Questions, council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Brazier, so moved.
Second by Lopez.
Okay, a motion by Brazier and a second by Lopez. Any other questions? Then we will call for a vote. Sue?
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. On to item number four, resolution, the city council of City of Elgin, Texas, supporting the City of Elgin's submission of an EDA Public Works Grant, application for $1 million, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documentation and establishing an effective date. Tom?
You're muted there, Tom. Turn it off. These next three are routine authorized to file a grant application, but we need them separately. But Charles has got the background on these. This one is actually Owen's. Oh, oh, this is the, okay. Oh, there's Owen. All right.
Sorry, I wonder, I have Brooke's account now, so she transferred me over when she's gone this week. But I can kind of talk to this real quick. And we were actually encouraged to apply for this grant through from Rachel Steele from Cap Pub. There've been a few communities around here that have received grants from the EDA Development Administration. What we would like to do with this grant, what we're looking at is to complete Oil Rivers Road. We estimate that, so we'll run it down to Lydick Road. We estimate that to be about a million dollars. And then talking to Bo, hey, how much do you think it would cost to improve the railroad crossing there? And that will need arms and lights and safety barriers like when you see an HED and elsewhere around the community. He said, that's probably going to be a million dollars, too. So I talked to Rachel at Cap Pub and says, hey, do you think we should apply for both of, you know, $2 million? And she said, so it'll be a 50 50 grant. And she says, yeah, that would be great because it would open up your business car, not only from the north coming off 290, but also accessing off Lydick Road. So she was very pleased. And she said, that would be a great project and you were forward with. So really what we're doing here is just asking you guys permission to apply for the grants. We I talked to Charles and Tom about it, and they said, yeah, you know, grant wise, let's get as much money as we can. So we're applying for $1 million, and then we would have to max that $1 million. So if there's any questions.
Questions, council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
So moved by Lopez.
Motion by council member Lopez.
Second.
Second by our council member Ariaga?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Then I'll call for a vote. Cannon?
Lopez, yes.
Finish, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Owen.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
On item number five, a resolution of the City of Elgin, City Council of Elgin, Texas, authorizing submission of a Community Development Block Grant mitigation, CDBG MIT Harvey State MIT application to the Texas General Land Office and authorizing the mayor and city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the CDBG MIT program. Tom?
Thank you, mayor. Charles, are you taking this? Yeah. Good. Thank you, mayor. These actually, these next number five and number six are similar. They're both authorizing submission of grants through the GLO. They're CDBG grants, and the money, I think, is coming from as as part of the response to the COVID-19. The federal governments have made $28 billion available for these two grants. And so I I think it's to the city's advantage. And one of the the best things about it is that in both cases, there's only 1% match. And I think we, if we can get either one or both of these grants, would be a great assistance to the city and taking care of some problems that we've had for a long time. The first one is it's called a Harvey State MIT application grant. It's a CDBG. And basically, this one is for upgrading drainage systems to pass the minimum storm event. And to, one of the advantages of this is it provides money to buy out those properties that people want to sell. So we get the right away that's needed to make the changes to, in this particular case, the County Line Road. And this one is over $10 million, and the city's portion would be 110,000. This simply is getting authorization from the council to submit applications for these grants. So the first one is on, again, the, for the County Line Road improvements. And it's in the amount of $10 million, a little over $10 million. And the second one is for flood control. It's called a 2016 grant application. It's to upgrade drainage across Central Avenue. Regaining portion of it upstream of Central Avenue, buying out five property owners along Kennedy Street. And rebuilding Kennedy Street, approximately 970 feet of it, including drainage screens at Lattin and Brenham Street. But that particular project has been a concern for a number of years. And this is one way of getting the funds to solve that problem once and for all, assuming that we can get it. So these two resolutions are simply authorizing the city to submit the applications for the grants.
Questions, counsel?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I get the, the, the central thing because it's on our five-year plan and everything. There is also a flood item that's on the five-year plan that's in Board Four. And, and I guess, so County Line then just automatically goes ahead of that, even though it was on the five-year plan?
Well, these, these were focused specifically on flood control. And that's the reason that they became eligible for funding from this source.
Did that answer your question?
Not really, because those people got flooded too, but it's okay.
Hi, Mayor, this is Jessica. I have a quick follow-up question. I'm just wondering if we secure those funds, Charles? Another opportunity to look across the board to see how it may be allocated for other areas in the city. Aside from the specific areas you just mentioned?
Well, these, actually, what we did was ask our, the city engineer to identify what they thought were the most critical areas that need to be addressed. And this is the list that they came up with.
Okay, that's interesting. I, I just, I would, in, in consultation with a few areas, such as, for instance, what Sue's mentioning. And I believe those are the two main ones that are in the five-year capital plan. Okay, just curious to see how that's planned to be earmarked if we secure this.
Mayor, I've got something to say. Flood control over the Sue and Jessica are talking about, and we've had people flooded out of there. Evacuated, buildings, houses had to be rebuilt. So, you know, that is flood control. And if we're applying for a flood control grant, that ought to be number one.
Which one, Juan, you cut out in the very beginning?
I'm sorry?
Which one were you talking about? You kind of cut out in the very first part.
Okay, it's the one down on Kennedy Street between Central and Brenham. The one that's been on books forever. I know we've tried to, we've done part of it, but the other part is hanging. And if we were going to address flood control, we ought to address that one and Taylor Lane. I just don't understand why we're not doing something for that. It's kind of just like what we talked about, the historic district. I mean, I don't know where County Line flood control came from, but we've had this one forever.
Again, as Charles said, number one, I'd say that's, you know, we have talked about Kennedy, and the truth is, as we've talked about numerous times, there's not an easy solution for that down there. And that the only way that I, that I think that we're going to permanently fix that for the long term is to talk about buying out properties, doing something major down there. And for the, the, the chance that the city's ever going to have, it all its own money to afford that, it'd be a long time. So that's exactly why that's one of these projects that we're asking for. Again, yeah, I mean, I, y'all know, we've done these enough where this conversation always starts with, what's the program? And what's the best chances for getting grant money? It's not, what's the number one need we have? Unfortunately, that's just the way the system works. So, so, you know, we're lucky enough to have the city engineer we have that has a lot of history and is able to help us understand what projects have been waiting on for a long time. But, but, but also you have to balance that with what ones do we think have the chance to be most successful? And that's kind of what Owen was even talking about on his end. So in each one of these cases, we don't have the money set aside to do the matching part for any of them. But when you're talking about, at the, at the, the least, we double our money. That's why we try to identify these projects that clearly need to be addressed. And, and County Line Road is a big project, whether or not there's a lot of people now, there now, you know, we've talked about the houses we build will double the size. So that, that's something that needs to be addressed out there. The flooding over that road has existed for a long time. That's why it was on his list. But I would think, just keep in mind that if we're lucky enough to get funded on these projects, then that frees up other money that we could devote to the other things that you're talking about. So, so I think it's, I wouldn't.
So in the meantime, I have to, I'm sorry, so in the meantime, I have to tell the people who call me every time they flood. And, and I ask for it to be put on the five-year plan, I'm sorry, the new people that are not there yet, they're going to get their drainage taken care of, but you're still going to get flooded.
If we're successful getting this grant of $10 million, then yeah, we probably would tell them that. That's what I'm saying. The issue is, what we're asking you to do tonight, just help us take a shot at getting the best, taking the best shot we can at grant money. We're not saying these are priorities. And that's the project that you're talking about, Sue. We, you know, if that's a priority, we can put that in right away, as soon as we have the resources and the council identifies that as a top priority. But, but I, I admit, I'm not sure I remember exactly which project you're talking about. But, but I shouldn't interpret what we're asking you to do tonight as some kind of prioritization of what project is most important. We're simply saying, based on the staff analysis, these are the projects we have the best chance to get some sizable grant money for, and that's why we're going for it.
And I'd just like to add that, that the time is of the essence in this particular case. And what we did was ask, when we talked to the city engineer, what he had on the shelf, already designed and ready to go, that we could get this application in with the designs already done. So that we would be first in line to get the funds. And some of these other projects, they just weren't ready to be submitted in the form that we needed to do as quickly as possible. And these were just the ones that they had off the shelf that we could do quickly.
Kind of think, I'm sorry.
We had extra money. I'm sorry, Juan, that's odd because.
Hold on, Juan, go ahead, and then Sue's next.
I just, you know, want to say, why do we have a five-year plan if we're not going to try to apply for grants and try to get this done? You know, every time it rains, those people get flooded out. I'm not, you know, going, going through that again. But how, where, where, how does it happen that, that new projects get funded right away? Or we apply for grants to fund those projects? I mean, are we looking for grants for Kennedy Street? Are we talking to the homeowners? Are we trying to do eminent domain? What are we doing on that one? That's it.
We're applying for this grant for that one.
I'm sorry?
We're applying for this, we're applying for this grant. That's exactly what we're doing in this case. We've had that plan together, as Charles said, I, I assume that's why Bo's had the basic engineering done for Kennedy Street for a long time. We, we can't afford it. I, I, I mean, I haven't come up with a plan where we can afford it. As soon as, but we can do those at any time, as soon as council prioritizes those projects and figures out where to come up with the money, we can do that.
The, the project on Kennedy Street was, didn't we, didn't we try to do that? And, and the only way we can fix it was by obtaining right away through their property, and they didn't want to sell?
Well, we've had that conversation. I, I haven't personally, but Bo's had that conversation with the owners before over there. But that's, and if you remember, we actually had a project we were going to do at the upper end there, but that the city was going to fund. But we realized that's the point.
It would make it worse.
Right, until we, we've already fixed it on the bottom side, on, on the downstream side, and we were going to do work on the upstream side. But yeah, it probably would have made it worse for those folks along Kennedy Street. So it's, it's, you know, it's like a lot of projects in a town of this age. And, and, and given the, the quality of some of the improvements that were made before, these are expensive fixes. That what to do isn't the easy, isn't the difficult question. It's how we're going to pay for it. And so again, all we're trying to do here tonight is, is access free money, to get grant money. We, we don't have to do any of these applications. And, and it's not as simple, there's not grant money out there where, where you get $10 million, and they say you can do with this whatever you want. They have specific purposes that they need to address with these funds. We're just trying to make the peg fit in the hole, as we do with every grant. We try to, every grant application is about positioning it in such a way that it can be competitive. And those aren't rules that the city or the city staff sets. We're, we're simply trying to access this other money. So what we're telling you is, is what the city engineer has told us, what our, our, our grant writer has told us is, these are the projects that have the best chance to be funded. Not that they're the most important projects. Now, I agree, when, when, when we thought Kennedy Street would, would qualify for this grant, absolutely, we put it in there because we know it's been an issue that's, that's been of concern for a number of years. I, I, I thought County Line Road flooded over the road well before I came here, and it's flooded for years up there by 290 is my understanding. So again, it's an issue that we thought we were addressing there. But we don't have to submit any one of them, obviously. We're just trying to do the right thing financially, more than. Go ahead, Sue.
I get that, that's the situation we're in, and that's the situation we're always in, because you have to get money where you can get money. That's how we survive on capital projects. The one problem I do have issue with, and maybe that's speaking with the city engineer. But five years ago, we had extra money left on a water project. And I've requested that the engineer go ahead and do the paperwork and do the plan for Taylor Lane and then QS Goins. And so that's there. Whether he remembered it or not, that's a different story, but it's already been done. That's why I got stuck, because I know the pre-planning has, has been done there, because it's been on the list for five years.
Yeah, so if that's the question, is why didn't that fit into this grant? Why didn't we use that? I think that's a fair question. I, I don't know the answer to that, but.
I don't like it, I don't like this either from a timing standpoint, because I forget his name, but, but the gentleman on QS Goins and Taylor has been coming to us for years and years. And I'll throw, we had a big long council meeting about it. I think I predate you, Tom, I'm not sure. But anyway, I don't like it either. However, the, the, to me, the reason why this, this grant, why, why, why I'm sure Bo, or whoever was doing the calculations on it, you've got X amount of people versus, you know, with traffic and, and all of that on, on County Line Road, it's more attractive to, to the grant. The grant givers, I would assume that has a lot to do with the high traffic and growth area. Whereas, you know, the, the money comes from a different, from outside of Elgin, and I don't, it always works this way. They don't care as much about one road with six or eight households on it as they do, you know, a transportation area. But correct me if, if that thinking is wrong, but that's typically how we see it, see it in these situations. And I, and I guess that, that's where we've always struggled with, is having grants for those specific deals, like on Kennedy Street or on Taylor Lane, where you've just got, you know, there's just not a lot of opportunities out there where there, somebody's willing to, you know, grant quarter million dollars for, you know, a handful of households in a, in a city. Am I wrong? Tom? No, you're right, you're right, Mr. You said exactly. I mean, that's what people are going to be served over on County Line Road. But, you know, we've had this one in the hopper for a long time. And if they can't give us a grant for that, for Kennedy Street and Taylor Lane, then as a city, we need to do that. We need to find the money to get that done, because these are our citizens. They're getting flooded out. That's, you're talking about Charlie Hill has been coming for years and years to, to the council meetings. And, you know, Freddie Nance.
I agree.
I, I remember they're saying, you know, the grant writer want to serve, you know, 200, 10,000 people over there than, rather than, than 30 or 40 over here. But yet they're the ones that are getting flooded out and, and rebuilding and stuff. So like, like I said, this, as a city, try to get that done sometime in the future and dedicate our resources, like the city engineer, to look for grants for something like that. Or if not, let, let, talk to the people about eminent domain, whatever. Something needs to be done sometime.
I agree. Well, I, I would just say that those projects are both in the five-year plan. They've been identified. We, there's no disputing, we need to do them. We, we don't, you're right, Juan, we don't have the money. So as soon as council tells us where the money's coming from, or what to do with the money, or what to prioritize, what to, what, what projects like that we can put ahead of it. That's why we have a five-year plan. That's why we prioritize those projects. Like I said, I think it's, in this case, it's a fair and simple question to say, why wasn't Taylor Lane chosen instead of, that's what I'm hearing. I think the main question is, why are we doing County Line Road instead of trying to do Taylor Lane? And I think that, I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but we can get the answer. As far as, I, I assume it's fairly obvious, it's because this decision was made, that this is the most competitive grant application. As I said, the staff doesn't look at these, and, you know, it's a bonus for us if we can get the number one project we want done in town to qualify, be the best qualifier for grant funds. But when we're making grant applications, our direction to the, to the grant writer and to the engineer is help us figure out the best ones that we're most likely to be successful and get funding for. And again, I, I think that's the way the city's always done things. That's the way most cities do. You can't, unfortunately, your list of what you want first doesn't typically line up with what grant funds are available. But as Juan said, then that's when, if you can't get the project you want through grant funds, then you have to find a way to fund it yourself. So that's where these projects have been in our five-year plan, like any number of other projects. I, I would suggest we, we can get the answer to that question, but, and again, I don't consider these capital projects necessarily being driven by the budget process. If, if we can find the money, we can start, can start the Taylor Lane project anytime, as soon as we figure out where the money's coming from. And, and for council to direct that, as, as we've said, it's in our five-year plan. So I don't think there's any disputing on anybody's part that it should be done. It's just whether or not we have the money for it.
I see it. Go ahead, Sue.
I think, just give me the answer to that question, and then if we know, if we know and we have the five-year plan, then make sure that what's on that five-year plan is ready to go. that what's on that five-year plan is ready to go whenever a grant comes up. Like, don't just throw it on there. Say, yeah, we need to do this. You know, that's why I, I asked for it to go ahead to be engineered. So it could be a shovel-ready thing. And, and so that's why I was confused whenever we're gonna put County Line above that. That was my only question. So I'm okay with this. We have to go after money where we can go after money. I just need the answer to that question and then follow up with, let's make sure that everything that's on the five-year plan is engineered where it's ready to go and get, um, you know, to be the best possibility for any grant that comes along.
Good, good point. Um, Tom, can you verify the, uh, can you verify the, uh, uh, how we search for grants? It's typically, Amy has, has a system where she checks, checks all the, uh, between, between that. I know there's a, there's a system between what she looks, websites and as grants get, um, uh, become available or whatever, there, there's, we have a system of looking for that, right?
Well, at some degree, but we're actually been trying to pull away with that of, uh, uh, be, simply because it, uh, uh, the expectation evolved to where, uh, just what you said, Mayor, that Amy somehow fell on her to be responsible for every grant every year. And Juan. I'm saying you're correct and that's what's happened. But she reached a point where we were, you know, these, these kind of grants with, uh, um, having to do with drainage streets, things like that. She'd be the first to say she didn't have the expertise. And so it, it, it was a thing that here in the last couple of years, we've kind of pulled away and asked the individual departments to be a lot more directly involved and working with Bo to apply for the right kind of grant. So.
Well, but just look, just verifying how they come available. Some, I, I said, Amy, that's how it used to work and always worked. But we, we as a staff is always, uh, i- is doing their due diligence as far as they become available. And those things are, when they get let and they're eligible, I mean, they have a way of kind of finding us too, right? As far as announcements and all that.
We've always got our ear to the ground. We have our consultant that's always monitoring grants. Uh, uh, just like, uh, Owen was saying earlier about, we had, uh, typically especially people that are managing those grants, they wanna make sure that there's good competition. And so it's in their interest to, to encourage people like us to apply as much as possible. And then, and then you do have the other cases like this where we're committed to doing a project. And so we go about searching out there to see what's available. And I think also what we said earlier, there, there has to be a balance between those things. We don't literally just apply for every grant possible just to get grant money because sometimes it has to be balanced by need. You know, there's plenty of projects out there that we might qualify for grant funds for, but if it doesn't really address a need in the city, uh, it, it, we don't go for those. So again, that's where it comes back to these cases. We consider all these projects as ones that have to be done one way or the other. Uh, all projects that we're committed to. And if we do project number two and three and not do number one, but if we get half that money in a grant to pay for project two and three, then that means we have more money locally that we can spend on number one. So, yeah, so it's all part of a system of, uh, wherever we can knock out projects that are already on the list. Uh, if, if they qualify for grant money, then we try to get it when we can. So it, it, uh, but, but we can certainly change that approach if we wanna just focus on, on our list of priorities. But, but I can get that answer for Sue and, and the others. I I talked to Bo at about 4:30 today and said, no, don't worry. There's no need for you to be on the meeting tonight because I don't think anything will come up. But I had, I know we're gonna have this discussion. We could have got that answer now, but I'll, I'll get the answer and, and, uh, and get it back to you.
Okay. Uh, is that in, in, any further comments or questions, counsel? That, that's good rhetoric. I mean, that's, that's, that's how we get, get things taken care of. So thank you for, for that dialogue. Um, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution, uh, the resolution as presented.
Sub move by Gonzalez.
Second, Penson.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Gonzalez and a second by Councilmember Penson. If there's any other questions, then I'll call for a vote.
Gonzalez, yes?
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Or, or, yes?
Yes. Dennis, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
I couldn't find the button.
Didn't mean to vote for you there, sorry. Okay, that, uh, passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item number six, resolution of the City of Elgin, City Council of Elgin, Texas authorizing the submission of a community development block grant mitigation CDBG MIT 2016 date mid-application to the Texas General Land Office and authorizing the mayor and city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the CDBG MIT program. Is this the same thing, Tom? Same project?
It is. This is the one for Kennedy Street.
I'm sorry?
Yes, this is the one for Kennedy Street, but same discussion. It's a 1% grant, uh, match on our part, but it would, uh, ostensibly deal with, completely address the Kennedy Street situation that we've been talking about.
Juan? What's that, Juan?
Uh, I didn't realize, did Tom say, uh, my computer's acting up? He said that that was a grant to address the Kennedy Street problem?
That's correct.
Okay.
Before we had that last discussion?
Why don't you tell us to wait, Tom?
No, the first one, the first one was County Line. This one is Kennedy. They're two separate ones.
Right, I understand.
Well, well, mistakes happen and this is a good one, I suppose. So.
If we got funded for this one, it would address everything down there. Juan, it'd be money to buy our property, get the drainage fixed. This, this is our permanent solution if we can get the grant. But it's a big get.
Got it.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Any questions? Suppose not? Uh, I'll entertain a, a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
Gonzalez, I make a motion. We approve the resolution as presented.
Second, Penson.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Gonzalez and a second by Penson. Any other questions? All right, then I'll call for a vote, Juan.
Gonzalez, yes?
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff, for that work. Um, item number seven, consider and adopt federal procurement policy and procedures for the city of Elgin relating to all federal grants required by two CFR 2, 200.320. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another requirement of the grant application. Charles, is this required for both of the last two applications or is it just associated with one?
Good luck again, Charles.
There you go, Brandon. Well, that's the, uh, uh, this, it's a routine requirement. Again, uh, uh, just as the title says, the, the feds want you to agree to their procurement policy and procedures. And you have to state that specifically in the, uh, in the grant application. So.
As it relates to the grants, yeah.
Yes, routine matter, no cost impact for the city.
Question, counsel, on this item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to, uh, uh, to adopt the federal community, uh, adopt the federal procurement policy and procedures for, uh, all matters required for these documents, which they discussed.
Sub move, Penson?
Second by Lopez.
Okay, I got a motion by Penson and a second by Lopez. Any other questions? Then I will call for a vote. Uh, Mayor?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Gonzalez, yes? Gonzalez, yes?
Is that a yes by Ariaga?
Yes.
And a yes by Brazier? Okay, then that passes unanimously. Oh, and Cannon, yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Glad that's over. Okay, so, uh, we are, we do have one executive session item and we will reconvene, um, uh, potentially to vote on, uh, on that item. Um, so I'm not real sure this, the broadcast has to stay going because we're coming back on, yet we're gonna move into private broadcast. Is that right?
That's right, Mayor. If you'll, if Michael will just, as soon as you go to executive session, we'll, well, the broadcast will keep going, but we'll, uh, cut off. The channel will stay active, but we'll cut off, uh, any, any information executive session. And then if you'll text or, or call Michael when you're ready to come back, he'll, he'll make sure you come back for any action you might take to close.
And, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna send Tom home on this one because we're not gonna need him, uh, um, for this discussion. So I'll, I'll just have to call Michael to tip, to put us back on. So if we, when we reconvene and adjourn. So, uh, uh, of course, Tom, you'll be, you'll be available by phone if we need you.
Sure. Michael, you on there? Is that right? We got, did I say all that right?
Okay, well then I'll, uh, um, I'll recess the, uh, the regular meeting at 7:40.
Michael?
Yes.
Um, so were you? So am I supposed to leave or are we coming back? I, I don't know what, what are we doing?
Who's that?
Do you want Amelia to stay on, uh, the city secretary to stay on, Mayor?
I don't, I don't think so. Uh, I'll just need the affidavit. If you'll take note, Amelia, of who's in the meeting, it's just gonna be all the council members present.
Okay, I'll just need a time when you, the time when you, um.
I can do that.
Okay. Go to the restroom?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, let's take a five-minute break and we'll, uh, resume into executive session. Everybody get up, use the bathroom, do what you gotta do.
Michael, you on there? Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I, I don't wanna, so you want me to stay on till he comes back? Or will that? No, it won't matter. I, I mean, if you can throw it over to him, that you can handle it. It's not gonna matter if I cut off. What I'm saying for me, I don't need to, you don't need me to stay. Okay. All right, if I can get to.